Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call it a order, special call board meeting for April 25th. And this is kind of a new, new thing for us four at least that we're here to discuss the candidates for District Five position vacated by Ms. Gibbons for the time being, the interim position. I'd like to welcome Mr. Brad Brown, Mr. Reggie Jackson. Thank you all for your time. Thank you for coming and being on time. That's real important for us.
Been here since ten.
So what we're gonna do today is kind of be a forum. Oh, also, Ms. Stanfield, there was a discrepancy with her voter registration at this time, and so we're, she's no longer gonna be considered for the District Five interim school board member. So we just decided to move on from there. So today it's just gonna be Mr. Brown and Mr. Jackson. And so what we're gonna do here, the format's gonna be kind of like a forum style where no particular order. We'll probably start with Mr. Brown first, since his name is alphabetically first. And we'll ask both of you the same questions, have about two minutes to respond. Each of y'all have two minutes, and then we'll move on to the next question. We hope to keep this about an hour, and good luck. Thank you all for being here. Listen, I'll start out. So, Mr. Brown, the question that every person on the board has been asked by the newspaper, why did you apply to fill the interim school board seat?
Well, I actually was approached by some folks in the community and said, hey, there's, the position's open, why don't you apply for it? And I tell you what, it was sort of like when I ran for office the first time, I wasn't looking for it. I had folks come to me and encourage to do such. And so after thinking about it, talking with Debbie about it, I was like, you know what? I could serve there. I think I have a background, particularly in finance, that can be beneficial, helpful to the board.
Oh, aliens.
Yes.
Got to fix that first thing.
And a willingness to, you know, serve and serve this community as I have in the past. So more of a servant leadership reasoning.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
First of all, I thought I was in District Four, because I was approached.
Yeah.
And by several folks, and I thought maybe go to GIS, and oh, man, I'm in Five. And I talked with the family, and they were highly encouraged, prayed about it. I felt that I can, I can bring a lot to the board, different perspectives. I've been dealing with children most of my career for decades. Every socioeconomic background, every intellectual level, I dealt with them. I'm dealing with families now. That's, that's the route I chose. I want to deal with family because I want to see that nuclear family position to be, to be exposed to the different resources that we have. I'm talking from a perspective of Brunswick Housing and the whole concept of poverty. So we're dealing with poverty, and we're also dealing with changing the paradigm of what people think of public housing. This is a new approach that Brunswick Housing is dealing with, being engaged with the residents. And I know that what happens in the house impacts the classroom. And sometimes they just don't know. We have a lot of overlapping service that provide them those answers and those resources. I have the school system support services to come and speak. I have, we have engagement opportunities for leaders in the community, the organization in the community that can support the families and the youth. So I have a propensity of ensuring that the kids know their options, know the consequences of poverty and trying to break that cycle. And it's hard, because they're gonna reach the apex of peer pressure, bullying from their siblings as well as their parents, because you're gonna have to separate yourself. And a lot of people can't deal with that. Because just having some encouraging words and aligning with mentors, being able to impact policy that can encourage that, I felt that I can bring to the table different challenges that you all are currently dealing with and with the future, what the future entails. I think my skills dealing with SPOST, dealing with construction, planning, project managing, and finances will also be, be helpful for, for the board. So with all that, I feel I can, I can bring a difference, and I can impact the community that I love so much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And we're gonna rotate asking questions. So, Ms. Lee?
Thank you. This sort of piggybacks on the first one we just asked you. What qualities do you bring, would you bring to this board? What qualities? Mr. Brown?
Or let's start with Mr. Jackson.
Oh, Mr. Jackson, I'm sorry.
The approachability, being able, when people see you on the board, they feel that they can't approach you. And I think I will bring that different quality to the community, because I'm always out there. Different events, encouraging our children. I think a sensibility to logic, what works, what can work, because I know how it feels to drive a bus with kids that are excited about their destination, not excited about the destination. I know how it feels to prepare meals for hundreds of kids at the right temperature, being adherent to the state regulation for proportion sizing. I know how it feels to clean a room, a classroom, and making sure that classroom is clean before the kids participates in that activity or in that room or area. So I think I bring that realistic approach, the different nuances that I'm learning with families and children in my current career. I think that quality there, I can, I can bring that quality.
Thank you. Same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, I think the qualities I bring is, one, the knowledge of this business. Born and raised here, came up through the public education system here, served, you know, this community for eight years, leading it as mayor. My banking background, you know, having the financial knowledge and understanding to be able to look at that, working with SPOST in the past, and knowing how that operates and how that functions well, being involved with youth. You know, I've worked with youth both in my church, with the WANA programs, with Boy Scouts, so have been engaged with youth. So I'm not an old man that doesn't know how the kids act. And I think just being someone like Reggie, you know, being involved in the community, being known in the community and being out there in the community makes a difference. Because I think leadership in any elected board needs somebody that is connected, engaged, and relatable. And I think I am very relatable in my current career, in my banking career. I have a broad spectrum of customers, from folks who are struggling paycheck to paycheck, to businesses that are financially well off and doing very well, and being able to provide them with a service and products that meets their needs. And it's really about meeting people's needs. How do we accomplish that? How do we provide, in this case, the education that our community deserves and ensuring that the students are being taught and trained appropriately so they can be successful in life, whether it's to go into, you know, a career type path, going to college, wherever it may be, but there being supportive and encouraging them. Because one of the things that I will hope that I get involved with is not encouraging everybody to go to college, but let's encourage students to get some careers, some skills to help meet the needs of our community and our nation right now, because there's definitely a need for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm official timekeeper.
I can't believe I went too fast.
You did. But thank you. Y'all both did a great job. So I'll ask the next question. Mr. Brown, if you'll be the first to respond. We disseminated some information a day or so ago, and a couple of the documents were our code of ethics and the norms and protocols. So the code of ethics is something that we're bound to follow as a group. The norms and protocols is something that our group has compiled to say this is the way we're gonna operate as a board. So this question relates to those two documents. Do you have any issues, or did you see any of the items listed in the code of ethics or norms and protocols that you feel are not attainable?
I did not. In fact, when I received it and read through it, it reminded me a lot of when I'd served before with the city. You know, we need to have discussions, you know? We need to express different opinions about items. We don't all need to be in unison at the time of debate. But what I liked about it, and a lot about how I have operated in the past, is that once a vote is taken, then we're in unison. Once the body has made a decision, that's the decision. And I can tell y'all, in my previous life, there were many votes that I was the sole vote for or against. But once the decision was made, that's the direction we went, and that's how we handled it. So it really mimicked how I have operated in the past and how I still operate things, you know? When a body, a committee, a commission or whatever is making a decision, you may have disagreements in the debate, but once the decision's made, that's the decision. Move along. Don't crawl in the corner and fuss and cry about it, you know? But move along and get it done.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Jackson, would you like to answer? I can repeat if you'd like.
No.
Okay.
When I first read it, I smiled. Because being an administrator reporting to boards, I've been on boards that functioned like that, and I've been on boards that didn't function like that. And I really appreciate it, documenting it, and especially when it comes down to knowledge and disagreements, you agree to disagree. I know each representative of the board represents their particular district, and some of the things that your district may want, and that you may have to put it out there that you may not agree with, and to satisfy that. But I think it was the presentation on document, on the document, and also the fact that there are rules of engagement. You all just don't know, because some boards don't function like that. Now, when it comes down to a disagreement, I'm part of several organizations, and in some majority votes, I totally disagree with, but I support it. You wouldn't know if you walked in and seen me operating under that agreement, because that is, that's the majority rules, that's, that's what was all agreed upon. I'm not gonna pout. I'm gonna try to execute it as best as I can, knowing willingly that I didn't agree, and everybody know. I just wanna make sure it's documented that I didn't agree. So if it fails, hey, I told you so. But I really appreciate that, because a lot of boards in governments and authorities and quasi-governments don't have those, those rules of engagement and disagreement and protocols, the ethics, and why we're here. We're here to represent everyone, not yourself, and I've seen it on school boards. They were just advocating for themselves, and that's not why we are here. We're mainly here for the children. Everything we do is for the children.
You're exactly right. It's all for the kids. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Jackson, what is your opinion of the current state of the schools in the district?
Well, I've been all of them. Well, for instance, I can, I can talk about Glenn Academy, because I frequent Glenn Academy a lot. And I learned that Glenn Academy is number fourteen out of four hundred and fifty something schools in the state. That includes the performing arts STEM schools where they can select kids, and we rank fourteen with a, with a public, a public exception rate, a basic qualification to go to a school, and we rank fourteen. That speaks volumes. The AP recognition that we receive for both schools and Glenn Academy speaks volumes. We have some challenges in other schools, elementary schools, and that is, is coming, and we probably can, can handle that with the new, the district. That is, that's a sensitive subject. We have some serious decisions to make on the, the new district alignment. The elementary schools are doing pretty much the best that they can for what they're working with. And again, I've seen where they're coming from, and had the opportunity and talked to those children, those families. So it's, it's a struggle. It's a struggle for the teachers. I know exactly. I worked in some of those schools in that, in the district that are, that are challenging right now. But it has shown some progress in the elementary level and in the middle schools. So overall, I'm excited on the high schools. Some of our middle schools are doing pretty well. Glenn Middle is doing pretty well. But some other challenges that can be addressed through administration alignment, teacher alignment, as well as the district, how we approach the, the district, the new district.
Yeah, go ahead and finish the sentence.
The zoning, the zoning, zoning plan.
Okay.
That's what it is. Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
And I would say my opinion of the school, of the school system is positive. I mean, I can say I don't hear anything in the community from a negative perspective. And I'm glad to see we are not experiencing here what some other communities are experiencing, and the outrage that parents are having towards what the school boards are doing or what's being taught and that sort. But I see, you know, at least coming out of the current administration, a uniformity. Everybody is working to one goal, and the goal is to educate the students to the best of our ability. You know, I know there's test score issues and that sort. And my perspective is, I think we're still dealing with the ramifications of COVID. You know, we're still dealing with that loss that occurred during that time period out of our control, out of your control, and trying to catch those students back up. And that's, that's a challenge, you know? And not being a teacher myself, but working with kids in the past, you know, I have seen a decline in students being inquisitive. Now, whether that relates to, you know, COVID, whether that relates to the springtime that they have, cell phones they have, I don't know. But it's been very interesting, their inquisitiveness is not there as we used to see. You know, have we overcome that? Don't know. But I think this school body is working hard to ensure that we are teaching the students and helping the students the best we can, and ensuring that, you know, they are being as productive as possible. But there are challenges in society as a whole that we have to confront and deal with. And I'm willing to be there to help assist and guide.
Thank you. Thank you. Before I ask my next question, I apologize, pardon our progress. We are still under construction. We're trying to deal with that as best we can so we can properly hear and convey what each of y'all have to say. Let's see, yeah. Mr. Brown, if you could change anything about public education in Glen County, what would it be?
Me personally, I would like to see more students involved in the music programs. Being a musician myself, being trained in the public school to play, and I still play, I would like to see us do more of that and encourage more of that. And the reason being, I think students who are involved in music, musical performances enhances their life into adulthood. Playing music, singing music helps with mathematical skills. It improves that, and that's something very important in life itself. It helps quiet people like I was to be more outgoing. It helps them to learn how to be in front of an audience and not be afraid to be there and be seen from a presentation standpoint. And I think the life skills that that helps to generate is tremendous. I know Reggie is a sports guy, and band always supported sports, but I'm sure sports always supports band. But I would like to see more of that. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
Let me tell you now, I was a first tenor. First tenor at Rensley, under band, clinic band, Way Cross. And I checked, no, I didn't want to be in the band in high school. And Mr. Cordell seen my resume, and he tried to talk me into it. And he did talk me into it, but I said, I want to be in the jazz band. He said, oh, well, to be in the jazz band, you have to be in the marching band. So I did the marching band for about two days. When the sex leader told me to run, I lapped after, in between two a days. And I told him some, you know, some things that he didn't want to hear. And that was the end of that. But yeah, I do have, I do love music. I do love music. But to answer your question, if I can change anything, it will be to give our students who are not athletically inclined, but has different skill sets, to have a performing arts school and to have a STEM school. And we're big enough to support that. I think strategically, we can, can, can do that. We have a performance arts centers being, being built as we speak with our taxpayers' money, with our East SPOST money, and that can be a key place for our kids to perform and show that skills. Because we don't know the next writer, movie writer, sitcom writer, actor, musician that can play professionally. We have a lot of professional, locally professional musicians here. People don't consider them professional, but once you get paid, you're a professional. You're not gonna not pay a person to play for you if you don't know that they know how to play. But having a STEM, STEM is that new, it's, it's, it's a global challenge that we all have. And it's time for us to participate, to participate in it as a county. We look at the other counties that have these STEM opportunities strictly for the engineering program. We have some bright kids. We have kid, one of the kids that I know just graduated with his doctor from Notre Dame with his, I think he has a physicist's degree. And he's teaching in Notre Dame right now, came right from Glenn Academy, played, you know, played tennis and everything. So it's, we have a lot of talent. So as an organization that can provide these platforms and these institutions, we, we should, it should be a part of the strategic plan to look at doing, building some type of school to that perspective.
Thank you.
All right. I have the next question. Mr. Jackson, is there any specific issue that motivates you to want to serve on the school board?
Education. And that's, you know, how I was brought up, that was the key to success. And what I tell our youth, that's the key to getting out of poverty, any type of education. Even going to the military is a form of education, because they're gonna train you for a specific skill, vocational technical school. My father was a union pipe fitter, steam fitter, Local 177. And he was trained here, was recruited out of Hercules and was trained, he was the first African-American pipe fitter in Glen County. And he told me that you Um, and he um, told me now, you don't want this type of job. But he always pushed college. Uh, my family always pushed college. And they were like, college, college, college. Um, um, come back home and, and, and lead your community. And that's how I was born and, and bred to do that. All your experiences, bring them back because everybody else leaves and, and help other communities and come back and talk about how bad the community where they come from. And some of them want to come back, but they can't because of debt and, and uh, the economy. Uh, but being able to impact one of the key uh, qualities of being successful, uh, education and to have an impact on that, on that policy.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
And right now, one of the key things that, that drives me is the political changes that we're seeing. And with the, you know, Department of Education at the federal level, whether it's going to be there or not be there, but what challenges and opportunities that provides opens up here on the local level. Um, really interested in being involved and engaged and, and I'm one that's, I've always think that we need to handle things locally uh, first, you know, regionally second, and then state third a, as far as control. And I think we're about to see in our, our nation where more local control happens and being involved in that local control. Uh, the other piece of it is being, you know, helping out to ensure that children are learning how to read, how to write, how to do math. Um, and it's, it's almost humorous, but the folks that I interview, younger folks that I interview that we hire, uh, or folks that we have as customers, um, how many of them cannot sign their name? And it's sad that, that our society has gotten to that point where young people no longer know how to sign their name. Um, and want to see if, you know, what can be done about that? How do we change that? How do we get that back in to where students are learning how to actually sign their name? Um, and do it properly? Because if you saw some of the signatures I see, they're not just messy signatures, it's all, it's, it's sort of pitiful. Uh, what students or younger folks are able to put on paper. And so really back to the basics. I, I, I like to see us really be focused on the basics because if you build that strong foundation, then those students can be successful in life overall.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brown, um, what is your position on the use of cell phones in classrooms in our schools?
I'd like to see them not be in classrooms. Um, when I was involved with Boy Scouts and on Boy Scout trips, we were very strict on cell phones not being out, not being used. Uh, when we would go to summer camp, cell phones would be turned in and held uh, because one, it's a distraction. Two, unfortunately, there are things that's, they can access that they don't need to access. Um, not all parents put restrictions on them as they probably should uh, to prevent inappropriate material from being viewed, uh, for inappropriate things getting passed along. Um, so I would very be very supportive of a no cellphone policy. Um, I know I have seen some other school systems provide a bag or a box or something that they get locked up on. The student retains that on them, but then it's locked up and they don't have access to it during the day. Um, it, it's interesting, the argument that you get though from parents that, oh, I need to have access to my kids. Well, yes, I understand that, but they're at school. You know, when a student's at school, what access do you really need? Because you know where they are. Um, the systems are in place to ensure they're not getting taken out of the school by somebody that should not be taking them out of the school. Um, and, you know, if there's an emergency situation, then that's when, you know, school staff, teachers, administrators get involved and should make that communication uh, to the parent. But I really think that, that they don't have a place in the classroom.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
No, I, I also agree. I, I don't think uh, cell phones should be in the classroom. It should be a certain decorum when you go into uh, a classroom, uh, because your attention needs to be focused on the teacher. And I see some classrooms have uh, boxes and bags to put the cell phones in. Um, because if the parents need to get in contact with uh, that student, they can do what they did in nineteen eighty-three. Call the school and have the secretary relay the message. Well, in between classes, that's fine, but in the classroom, no. And definitely in elementary school. Now you should, let me go back because high school should have a little bit more freedom in between classes. Middle school, no. Elementary school, no, until after or before school. Um, because there's no need to uh, have interaction with, with anybody outside the, the school uh, while you're in class trying to learn. So it should be, you know, different levels uh, of freedom with the phones, um, based on your grade level.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Jackson. In the strategic plan that you received, one of the goal areas is family and community engagement. How would you encourage collaboration, partnerships between our schools, local businesses and community organizations?
Well, I kind of, I do that now. Um, getting the message across to the, to the parents and how important it is. And also to the, the, the business community, how important it is. So I know, you probably noticed I said we. When I say we, it's everyone that's in the county. Every adult that's in the county is a part of the education of our children. So everyone in, in the, in the business industry, uh, nonprofit, everyone is responsible for educating our children. And we want to send that message out and let them know that you will need to be a part of our, our engagement with the families. Um, what part do you have in uh, educating our, our families? It can be easily articulated because nine times out of ten, that parent is working for that agency or that, or that company. And that money that comes in there helps support that. So those lights are on so these kids can study. You can tie everybody into the uh, the public education realm, uh, from any industry uh, in our community. So getting that message out and inviting them in and reminding them, constantly reminding the families and the business community that they are part of educating our community.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
And I would say, you know, families being involved with their children is highly important. And whether we, you know, publicize, put out information, showing statistics of, you know, success rates of children that aren't successful, why aren't they successful is because families aren't involved. I think we can pretty much discern that. But ensuring that the programs that are out there already, uh, the engagement of the businesses, the engagement of the chamber, um, and communicating that and encouraging employees to go and volunteer at schools. Uh, I know in the past, I've been a mentor at Glen Middle School and went and read with the students, uh, and shared with the students, uh, tried to encourage students. Um, I've gone into the school system, uh, doing presentations, um, many times from, you know, how to handle finances to promoting uh, local history, whatever it takes. Uh, but having that communicated out, you know, through the media, uh, through Facebook, through our chamber, uh, that being encouraging, and I think we as school mem, board members should be engaged in those other organizations so that they see our faces. And we can then directly relate back to, hey, here's the importance of why we need you there, why we need you involved, um, and why we need parents involved. Uh, because I think parental involvement is the key to success. Uh, when parents are not involved and not engaged, then I would, harder to say that you probably can show those are the students that are not successful or the students that have behavioral problems within the school system. It's not necessarily that the child is bad, it's just the child hadn't been raised properly or doesn't have parents that are engaged with them properly.
All right, thank you. This is a good one. Mr. Brown, how would you plan to handle public criticism?
Handle it for many years. And, and you have to understand, when you're in an elected position, you can't please all the people all the time. If, if you're pleasing everybody at one time, you're not doing something right. Um, I, I tell the story, when I was in office, I had Republicans swear I was the first Democrat they ever voted for, and I had Democrats swear I was the first Republican they ever voted for. When I was in office, I was challenged by left-leaning organizations in our community and had a recall attempt that was not successful. I had a right-leaning organization challenge and attempt a recall attempt that was not successful. So criticism does not bother me. My wife's different, it bothers her. But I let it roll off my back. Um, the best way to describe it, well, I was told that if you have mud thrown on you, don't try to wipe it off. Let it dry up and it'll just flake off and go away. Um, if it is criticism that's warranted, you need to take that into consideration and go, okay, what did I do wrong? What do I need to change? Um, did I misunderstand what I thought uh, was the goal here? Um, but try to learn from it too. Um, but criticism does not bother me. Um, I, I deal with it on a regular basis.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
I'm not, I'm not bothered by criticism. I have thick skin. Um, but one of the times I would probably see the most uh, criticism is when I recommended to, to shut the city pool down um, because of health reasons. And I was pulled in many rooms. And one was a board uh, Ed member, a board member, and he had some choice words for me. Uh, the community, everywhere I went, church, store, everybody, why you shut the pool down? Why you shut the pool down? Uh, that was, that was huge. And I hated every springtime leading to summer because pool issues came up. And that pool was closed for like six years before we were able to come up with enough resources to build what you see now of the uh, the Brunswick Aquatic Center. And they were very pleased about it. Um, a lot of it simmered down once they seen the report of why the pool was closed. And they didn't have no clue that the uh, pool was leaking and didn't have proper uh, chemicals in there at any time. Um, but sometimes criticism comes from not having the proper knowledge, going with some hearsay. Uh, usually it, it, it settles down once they hear the facts, um, and go with the facts. But I don't, I, it, it doesn't bother me, you know? Former athlete and always used to get criticized for everything, so it doesn't bother me. Um, mainly because of that, because you're always going to get critiqued. Used to getting critiqued. Uh, came from the old school and you got critique from everybody, school teachers, the store owner, everybody. It's a different time now. Um, but my skin is thick. Um, and I know, you know, what the, what the true facts are, and I base my decision on facts.
Thank you.
And the last question I get to ask. Mr. Jackson, if this seat is permanently vacated, do you plan to run?
That was the first question I had in my mind because I wasn't going to participate or engage in this uh, process if I wasn't planning to run for this seat. And I think after, you know, once the sunset of this term ends, I believe I can have compelling evidence um, that um, I can win over my constituents, um, if, if selected.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
And that's an unknown. Uh, you know, one, if I do serve, what if I find out I don't like doing this? Which I doubt. Um, but it really is an unknown at this point in time. Um, because obviously it's, it's a unique circumstance of why this position is open. Um, it's not, you know, because somebody has passed. It's because somebody has been removed, but they could come back. What if they come back? You know? And so really need to see where things are at that time. Um, you know, what's the feel, you know, of serving on the board? What's the feel of the community? Um, who else is out there that, that may step up? Um, so at this point in time, sitting here today, I cannot say, yes, for sure, I am definitely going to run in the future. Um, because the future, a lot of things can change. Um, a lot of things could come to light that may be a reasoning to go, well, I don't know, let's, let's think about this. Or it could be, man, this is the greatest thing in the world, let's keep it going. Um, so to be seen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions? Follow, follow-ups? Again, thank you all very much. Uh, I think most of the folks in the audience are today are from the school system. And so I want to thank y'all for being here. Um, and this is kind of unprecedented for us four at least. I think Mike Holsey was the only one currently on the board that has gone through a similar situation. So uh, I will say this, we all have a tough decision ahead of us. I think we have two highly, highly qualified candidates. Um, I think both of y'all would serve the community well, serve District Five very well. Um, and our plan is to take this information, take what we learned here today about each of y'all and, you know, go home and we think about it. And then come May, uh, we don't really vote in the work session, but we would vote on, in our regular scheduled board meeting, um, which is that first, second Tuesday.
Probably the thirteenth.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of, of May, we would vote to uh, approve one of, either one of y'all. And uh, so if you do have any questions, feel free to contact me. Uh, I'll tell you what I can. And uh, we appreciate y'all being here. Thank y'all very much. Y'all did, both did a wonderful, wonderful job.
Mr. Chairman, can I yet give, make a remark?
No.
I'm talking, man. I'm talking there, gentlemen, just for a second.
We'll give you two minutes.
Gentlemen, thank you. I, I'm very reluctant to speak in board meetings because I'm just hired here. But this board, the six of them, especially the two new ones, did not know this was going to happen. This came to them totally unexpected in January and February of this year. And this is not something that they're trained to do as board members or why they ran for office. But what they're trying to do in selecting someone, they have done at the highest level. There have been no discussions behind closed doors. Everything has been a vote board. You both are great people and you're wonderful, but I'm very proud of my board too. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. You still have thirty more seconds. With that said, I will make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
I'll submit.
I made a motion and.
You made, you made a motion, sorry, second.
Mr. Redala, second. In discussion, all in favor? And we are adjourned today. I can still.
One forty-three.
One forty-three. Congratulations, guys.